That didn't do any of that. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Board for the Board of Education for Santa Barbara County. I will turn it over to Ugo first to talk about interpretation. You're fine.
Sorry. Thank you. This is a bilingual message, it will be repeated in English. This is a message bilingual and it will be repeated in English. Buenas tardes, para facilitar el acceso lingüístico por procesar nuestra interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español. Mi nombre es Hugo Santos y estoy con mi compañero Steven Watson. Seremos nuestros intérpretes esta noche. Si usted es bilingüe no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es bilingüe, en inglés y en español tendrá que elegir el idioma en el que desee escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte, en forma de globo, en la parte inferior derecha de su pantalla, que dice "Interpretación". Acá clickeáis "Selección Español". Si está usando la aplicación de Zoom en un iPad o en un teléfono inteligente, busca el menú de tres puntos en la parte inferior derecha de su pantalla, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas" y elija "Español". Recordamos a los oradores que por favor hablen uno a la vez y de forma moderada, eso es muy importante. Good afternoon. In order to facilitate language access, we will be providing simultaneous interpretation between English and Spanish. My name is Hugo Santos and I'm here with my colleague Steven Watson. If you are bilingual, you don't have to press anything. If you are not bilingual in English or Spanish, you will have to select the languages that you wish to hear in the interpretation in. If you are on a PC or a laptop, look for the glove icon in the bottom right that says "Interpretación", select "English". If you are on a Zoom application on an iPad, tablet, or iPhone, or phone, locate the three-dot menu on the top right, click on "Language Interpretation", and then select "English". We'd like to remind our speakers, please speak one at a time, and this is very important, and I cannot emphasize that more. Please speak at a moderate pace. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Kami. So we're talking about Veterans Day being close to today's board meeting. As elected officials, I think it's good for us to remember that it's because of those millions who served and those hundreds of thousands that died, we owe them our seats today in our ability to sit here and represent the people of our communities, as well as for everybody to go through elections over the next few weeks. Those soldiers fought, many of them died, so that we could elect officials in a democratic society. So that alone should be a great reason for all of us to study our ballots and to go to the polls and elect those we think would best represent us. So I know all of y'all will, without a doubt. I would encourage you, everybody else, or for you to encourage others to do that as well. So we have a couple of veterans today in our meeting that I know of. Of course, I'm one. Joe Howe, airborne soldier from back in the day, is another one. So Joe, we'll go with airborne soldier. So Joe, if you would, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Joe. And obviously, I am not Judy Frost. Chairwoman Frost is temporarily under the weather. She expects a full recovery and very soon. And of course, we look forward to having her back in the saddle and doing great things in the very near future here. So everybody has the agenda in front of them. Does anybody have any requests for changes to the agenda? Or Madam Superintendent, any changes on your end? None heard, we will move on. A couple of comments, and then I'll open it to the other board members as well. Salute to Teachers is one of SB CEO's premier events. Oh, I'm sorry, let's do a roll call. Okay, so for a roll call, I will note that everybody is in attendance today with the exception of Chairwoman Frost. So Anna, please make a note of that for the minutes. Changes, or I'm sorry, board comments. Salute to Teachers, a great event coming up this Saturday. If you have not submitted your RSVP yet, please do that. I was able to attend last year, my first year, and it was just amazing and so much fun. And of course, a lot of work goes into that. We have some true superheroes out there among the educational community, and Saturday night is a great way for us to recognize them. Tuesday's Election Day, I think I reminded everybody of that already, so please encourage others to vote as we are. And finally, microphones, as I've already mismanaged mine already today. I would ask board members to be cognizant of that. And as you speak, please speak fairly closely to it. If you sit back too far, it doesn't always pick up everything. So Kami, you're the watchkeeper. You can stand up and wave your arms if we're not doing that, okay? At this time, I would ask if there's any public comments on anything that is not on today's agenda. Hearing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, and wanted to go back one step to see if you'd like to invite others for board comments before I make one.
Thank you. Rookie stand-in president here. If I go back to other board members, do any of y'all have comments?
May I just make a shameless promotion for two organizations that I think are doing some really important work right now with students in both North County and South County. One is CADA, the Fighting Back Mentor Program. I would invite people to take a close look at what they could bring to a mentoring relationship with a youth in need. They're identified by teachers and counselors, and these are kids that are sitting on a waiting list right now in both ends of the county. It could really benefit from the help of an individual, a guide on the side, who can help with everything from life skills to homework. It's also a great opportunity to help boost reading, comprehension, fluency, and also, as always, Partners in Education. There is volunteer opportunities at Partners to again work with singular youth or youth in groups, and a reading fluency coach can go really far in helping kids master the language. And, you know, collectively, we can all help boost those test scores that we all like to look at and complain about. But I think this is something where personal action can go far. So I'm a board member but an active volunteer for both, and we need extra volunteers, North County and South County. Thank you.
So those are not shameless plugs, that's an awesome plug. So thank you. Other board members? Mr. Ward?
Thank you. I just have a couple items, and I'll try to go through real quickly, moderately. We have our CSBA Annual Conference in San Diego, December 1st through 3rd. Our CCBE Board of Directors meeting is also on that same weekend, and we have our elections for President, Vice President, and Treasurer. Also, we had an executive meeting for the CCBE last week, and I just wanted to share, in addition to the Governance Handbook, we have a new legislative priority that we made, that I wanted to make, that will be helpful, I think, for our county Board of Education or county office. Because we want to create a message about supporting sustainable and alternative education funding for juvenile court and community schools. That's a number-one priority for our CCP organization going forward. The funding is based exclusively on ADA, and we feel like it's not appropriate type of funding for the specialized program that it is with unpredictable levels of enrollment and fluctuating throughout the school year. And I just wanted to comment on the superintendent's report. I just really appreciate reading everything you're doing. It's a great comprehensive list, and I just wanted to call out the development of the template with the statutory requirements, the grants and the plans, and following that along. That is so organized, and I know that was a big, massive undertaking, and I really appreciate the work that went into that. And then, one more thing. I was invited to Los Olivos Elementary School to ride the first-in-the-country electric school bus. That was delivered, it's not quite finished yet, but it was, the kids got to, you know, not ride in it, but they got to sit in it and see it, and it is, we all, the administration and I had to ride through the town of Los Olivos in it, and it was 100% grant-funded. It was a parent effort that found grants to fund this, and it's going to be a 60% reduction in operating and maintenance costs. So I think it's a great, great opportunity for the school, and I'm glad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any other comments? Ms. Dany?
I attended the Santa Barbara County School Board Association meeting this morning, and with everyone going around the table, there seems to be a recurring concern, especially about safety of our students, and especially in today's environment. And it's not only erecting fences, but understanding how to warp the fences, make sure they're operable, and that all of our students are safe. And so this is a great organization that does great work throughout the county. So anyone who's interested in attending, it's an open meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, now, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Be glad to first pause on the superintendent's report that you have in your book and see if there's any specific questions or comments. I do have a few additions that I'd like to share today that are not part of the report. So let me first pause and see if there's any questions that you might have. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ward, for the compliment on the report. I want to say thank you to Ellen Barber and Curriculum Instruction for helping to develop the templates on all those timelines, along with Riverside County Office of Education. We really worked together, and as you saw, there are many, many important considerations for each and every one of those plans that we wanted to ensure that our districts had on one, in one spot, so that they, so we could help them organize. So thank you. With that, let me add a few remarks. Let me go to my notes. Four items that were not in the report. So number one, I met recently with Sheriff Phil Brown. He, as you all know, is leading the Project Opioid Forum around the county. And that forum invites elected leaders, education, faith-based organizations, just individuals from around the county to come together and talk about the opioid crisis, fentanyl, narcan, and not only talk about it, but what are we going to do about it. Something that parallels Project Opioid is something we, as a SB CEO, have been talking about, which has to do with community forums, information to the community for really 18 years and under, in terms of that age group. And so it kind of coincides with this opportunity to provide a webinar or a community forum or a town hall, for lack of better words, spotlighted on youth 18 and under around fentanyl specifically and narcan. So I met with Sheriff Phil Brown this week so that I could get his input, the input of Project Opioid members, individuals from around the county. There are many who are so focused on this. And so I wanted to let you know we're working on it here. Bridget Fablett and Kami Barnwell are going to help lead the planning of this, and we'll get this launched as a community forum online, probably in this, I'm going to guess here, a January timeframe. So I wanted to know that it was, so that's one item. The second is the Student Advisory Council. I'm so excited to launch that inaugural Student Advisory Council. The applications have been placed online, they're on the website, in social media. We have had individuals apply, and the due date is in November. My plan for that, obviously, is to get input as a superintendent from the entire geography of Santa Barbara County, starting with high school students at this point, and hopefully having engagement from all of the areas. But I also would like to invite the students to be part of the county board meetings, so that they'll come and be able to share with the board about insights that they're having from the council, but also from their school. So that's the evolution that I'm hoping for, and I'll make sure to provide you with updates as we go along the way. The third item is that in December, I'm hoping to share with you an organized digest of some laws that have been enacted that impact governments, boards, like wars, as well as for schools. There's so many that occur over the course of the year. They are introduced, some go forward, some don't. At this point, we know what has gone forward and what's been adopted, and I'll create a digest for you come December so that we have that going forward. And then, lastly, I wanted to share with you something that we're flipping a bit in terms of order of operations for an award ceremony that I know that we all, all really appreciate, and that's Employee Service Award presentations. So if I can go back a little bit, Employee Service Awards, so 10-year anniversaries, 15, 20, even 40-year anniversaries. We've, for a long time now, I actually don't know if we've ever not celebrated them at a board meeting. And when we have had board meetings in the past, last year, when we had this recognition the year before, the board meetings were online. And what we learned about doing them online is that more employees participated. Because our employees are not here only at Cathedral Oaks or Co. Office or in Santa Maria, they're all over, right? It's itinerary staff, staff in classrooms. And so what we learned is, or at least what we're going to attempt to do this year, is to continue it online. While our board meetings are in person now. So the flip is, we'll hold the event, we're going to hold it still in the February timeframe, online, and we'll invite the board to attend the event in terms of those who might want to be representative of the board to be part of it online. But we would like to ensure that our employees get a chance to be recognized. We create a booklet that also came out of the pandemic, where photos were there, quotes were provided. So we're looking forward and eager to planning this event, but it will be outside of a regular county board meeting. It won't be a county board meeting. And that's it. I'll hand it over back to you, Mr. Porter.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Salsito. And we'll move to a couple of presentations, and this is pretty exciting because most of our, it's not often enough that we, here in these board meetings, talk about our kids, the kids that SB CEO directly services. So today, we're going to have a big chunk of that. So the first one is going to be something really exciting, and that is gaining accreditation for our schools. And I'm going to turn this over to Renee Wheeler and Shannon York to address that. Pretty exciting. The floor is yours.
All right, so I have been listening. All right. Apparently not listening close enough. All right, well, thank you for having me here today to provide you with this update. As we identified in our LCAP, JCCS is working on becoming initially accredited this year, and we have made significant progress toward this goal. So I'm excited to share with you what we have done so far. Shannon York will start our presentation with an overview of WASC, and then I'll share the process JCCS leadership team has engaged in to complete the process. So Shannon, all yours.
There we go. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. So as Renee shared, I'll be talking about, just giving a brief overview of the WASC process in general, and then really as it relates to some of the benefits to our students and staff. So in thinking about WASC, it is an acronym, as it is in every education setting, and it is the Accrediting Commission for Schools of the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. And WASC is how we normally refer to it. They do specialize in California and Hawaii, although they are expanding to international schools as well. WASC is one of six regional accrediting agencies in the United States. Since California is one of their primary areas, they have collaborated with the CDE to align their process with other state planning processes, such as the Single Plan for Student Achievement, or SIPSA, as well as the Local Control and Accountability Plan, or LCAP. The main purpose of WASC is really to verify the quality of our school program through a self-evaluation process with a focus on teaching and learning. And WASC not only accredits public schools, but also private schools, charter schools, home schools, community colleges, and others. And through the commission, they actually oversee around 2,000 visits annually. So some of the benefits of accreditation to students is really that it is required for high school courses to count towards A through G requirements. And so A through G is a shorthand way to refer to the minimum coursework requirements to apply to University of California and California State University schools. Therefore, if a student applies to a UC or CSU, a diploma from an accredited high school is required. Some state-based scholarship programs also require an accredited high school diploma, as do the Marines. Some of the benefits to teaching and learning is really that this is a self-study process. So staff themselves are reflecting on their own teaching practices, identifying areas of strength at the school and areas for growth or improvement. The self-assessment process is communicated in a report, which is shared with WASC, and there is a scheduled visit after that report. The visit is completed by peer, so it's a peer evaluation process. Primarily, other teachers and administrators from accredited institutions are part of the visiting committee, and their purpose is to validate what was communicated in the report by the staff. At the end of the visit, the team shares areas to celebrate, critical areas to focus on, and really then gives a recommendation to the WASC Commission for accreditation. This feedback from the team gives the school the opportunity to think about their current goals and plans, potential shifts for school improvement, and really thinking about any shifts of aligning of their practices that they'd like to address. And this often leads to new learning for teachers and program improvements for students. So we, JCCS is currently going through the initial accreditation process. So right now, JCCS is, you know, it is a smaller program that we have. And so technically, while we have three campuses, we have two schools. So our court school, which has two campuses, Los Robles at Boys Camp, and Dos Puertas at the Juvenile Justice Center, and our community school, Peter B. Fitzgerald. And due to the size of these programs, the WASC Commission has allowed us to combine both schools into one process. So the report covers the overview of both programs. And I believe you do have a copy of the report in your board book. And similar to the full-scale self-study process, the initial accreditation process does have the same criteria for accreditation. That criteria is organization for student learning, curriculum, teaching and learning, assessment and accountability, school culture, and supports for students. And we submitted our report on October 31st, which is pending recommendations from our visiting WASC member. And we have a scheduled one-day virtual visit upcoming November 29th. And again, due to the size of our program and because it is an initial accreditation, we have only one visiting member. And the schedule for our visit is still being worked out. However, it will include meetings with our staff and students, and also with our probation staff partners. And here's just an overview of some of the scheduled events that we are going to be having virtually with our WASC member. So what we're all waiting for is, of course, what are the possible outcomes of this visit? So there are three options. Basically, we can have an initial accreditation. We can have a candidacy status. What this means is that we are making progress towards accreditation, but we need to submit annual updates on some of our areas that we need to approve upon. The third is having a withheld status, meaning that there are larger programmatic changes that need to happen. And once those have been addressed, the school can reapply for initial accreditation. Our visiting committee will make recommendations to the commission, and we should hear about the status of our visit in late January. For context, I've included the last full year of data that has been released by WASC for the 1819 school year. Of the close to 2,000 annual visits, only 209 of those were initial visits. And as you can see, approximately 80% of schools achieve initial accreditation status. The previous year had similar rates as well. And while these numbers do not directly impact our outcomes, it gives a sense of the frequency of initial accreditation. And so some future implications after this visit is that if we receive initial accreditation, or our candidacy for accreditation, we will complete the full self-study process in three years' time. Because that typically takes about 12 to 18 months to complete the self-study process, JCCS will start preparing in about a year and a half to two years' time for that full visit. Part of the requirement for accreditation is to have at least one staff participate in a visiting committee for another institution annually. And I see this as a real asset, really because this is a great professional learning opportunity for our staff to be able to see what other schools are doing and to get ideas for what we can implement at our own school setting. The self-study cycle is six years with a mid-cycle report at year three. Sometimes schools have a mid-cycle visit, sometimes they just submit a mid-cycle report. It really depends on the recommendation from the WASC Commission. After accreditation, students can begin working toward their A through G eligibility. And all UC and CSU systems would accept JCCS transcripts, and additional opportunities such as scholarships and enlisting options would expand. And with that, Renee is actually going to be discussing our engagement process specifically around JCCS, unless there's any questions I can answer at this point.
All right, thank you, Shannon. And now we get to the fun part, right? All of the work that we did to get us to this point. Yes. Okay. So as with most things, I start with the JCCS leadership team. And our leadership team is comprised of general and special education teachers, teaching assistants, and our student information specialists. And the leadership team provides input regarding all of the things you see up there, from curriculum adoption and review to all of the many plans that you just saw in Susan's update with the LCAP, the SIPSA, the safety plan, et cetera, et cetera. So they provide a lot of essential input, and specifically for WASC, it was addressing student academic and behavioral needs, professional development, CTE programs, and student achievement. We typically meet every other month, or more often as needed. And for WASC, we met monthly. Oh dear. All right, so WASC provided us the opportunity to reexamine our vision and our mission statement. And the timing really was perfect, since the juvenile justice system in California has had some significant changes in recent years. So in thinking about our vision, we used two guiding questions. What do you dream of for your students' future? And what are your aspirations for a student after high school? And once these essential questions were answered, then we reviewed our vision and our mission statement with this new lens, and we revised it to, "Juvenile court and community school educators guide students to succeed in healthy social, emotional, academic, and career growth as they flourish into productive members of society." And then, once we had our vision statement, we asked ourselves, what can we do every day to help our students achieve our vision for them? And this became our mission statement. "Within our highly structured environment, our commitment is to provide a student-centered, deeply engaging setting that is safe and respectful for all. In preparing students for 21st century readiness..." In preparing students for 21st century readiness, we focus on perseverance, problem-solving, collaboration, career awareness, and critical thinking in an all-inclusive classroom. We strive to include parents, teachers, and community members as partners in our students' educational program as they work to reach their full potential. So now that we know what our vision is for our students, and we have defined what we do on a daily basis in our mission statement, it was time to examine instruction and what needs to be done in every classroom. Since this is something we want everyone in our school to know and internalize, we created the acronym ACCEPT. Since this is, since this really encapsulates what we want our students to do and what we want for them in their communities when they return. So we have A is for agency and perseverance, C for critical thinking, the other C for community and civic awareness, E is for effective communication, P is for pro-social skills, and T is for 21st century readiness. And as you can see, there's many other little bullets that further explains how we are going to achieve that. So when you think about our vision as being what we want our students to achieve someday, and our mission is what we want for our students every day, then you can think of our school-wide learning outcomes as what we do in every classroom to help our students achieve their potential. Our next step is when our curriculum work groups meet, is we will start to make sure that accept values are incorporated into all of our unit plans that we create. Oh, wait, no, I'm not done. One more thing. One of our other steps is getting it out there so that everybody can see it when they walk into the lobby at the Juvenile Justice Center, or when the students are sitting on our classroom. But one of the things we came up with that we really liked is putting them in the hallway at the Juvenile Justice Center. And for those of you who have been there, you know that's a really long hallway when you go from the classroom to the courthouse. And I can't think of anything better for our students to read than what we see in them and what we want them to become. And so we are currently putting on our graphic designer hats and creating those posters to be hung. And probation has already said, yes, we want that, that's great. So now, I can thank you for this opportunity to give you an update, and I look forward to sharing the outcomes of our visit when they're available.
Thank you very much. And questions? Ms. Cardy?
Just a question about, are you engaging the youth, perhaps, in the production of those materials? Any ideas that they might have about how to message?
As far as the design, yeah, yes. Because we always have a lot of artists. It has, it always surprises me the great things that they come up with. And like, this last week was Red Ribbon Week, and so we had them create the door displays for How to Say No to Drugs. And it was so great to see what they came up with. Some of them really made me laugh out loud. So, so, yes, and especially for, for the posters that we hang in the classroom and in the hallway, they definitely need to be a part of that process.
And the buy-in. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Howell?
Mary Beth, as always, thought about some good points and just following up on hers on the buy-in. Is one of the challenges with so much effort and such a great program, knowing the challenging situations that put a lot of the kids into the system, is it through counselors? Just, there's this great opportunity that they, unless, until they buy in, it's just in a book, or it's in, it's there. So what, how do you do that? Is it through the counselors? I'm sure the teachers, I'd be interested in kind of how to address that, how you, the system has addressed that.
I think it all comes down to those personal relationships, and just getting to know your students, because they're all unique, and they all have their own challenges, you know, that got them to where they are. And I always think of us as planting seeds. So we plant seeds, and we plant seeds, and sometimes, you know, we get to see them grow. And sometimes it takes a couple of years for them, for them to grow. But it's, in the end, it's that relationship. And if you think about, in the boardroom at North County, we have that great poster by Maya Angelou that says, "People may not remember what you say, but they will always remember how you make them feel." And I'm paraphrasing, because I know I forgot some words. But I think that's what we do, right? We believe in them, we form those relationships, and we, we meet them where they are, and then we help them along the way to get where they need to go. And we do have a lot of help, right? Because we have behavioral wellness that are within our institutions. And so we have a clinician and a half, which I don't know how that works, but they have a clinician and a half at the JJC, and then also at camp, so that the students are afforded some, some therapy and, and work towards that. And then they do programming, the pro-social and the evidence-based programming every day at those two facilities, to really start to get the kids to see another way.
Ms. Danny?
Are you met with much resistance in the education process in this environment?
Depends what day you ask me that. So one-on-one, you know, you get to see them in a different light, and, and so there's very little resistance. Sometimes in the group setting, it gets a little more challenging. But I have great teachers, great, great teachers. And we've had a lot of training and trauma-informed and all of the other great things. And so we just, I think, one of my teachers said it best when she's like, "I've always believed that the kids who cry out the loudest need our help the most." And so you just kind of have to remember that. And again, we are there, ready to teach them whenever they're, they're ready to receive it. And, and it's a day-to-day struggle. Some days are great, and, and we're like, oh, I could do this every day, and then some days, not so great.
Thank you.
Ms. Herman?
Thank you for that presentation. I really appreciated the idea of the mission, the vision, mission, and values, because it seems so simple, but it really, when organizations do that, it really provides a strong framework, because you have an expectation, and you have the values that you can continue to move forward. And especially having some, having a physical way to reinforce that is really powerful. So I, I think that is, it's a great, it's a great way to move forward. And I also, in the response to the idea of the buy-in or the student engagement, is as you put this plan into action, the, the aspects that you have to get their input, to get their response to this, so it can continue to evolve. So, thank you.
Mr. Work?
Thank you. I agree with Nadra, the thoughtfulness that went into your mission and your vision. I, 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 you had a full-day workshop, and I really appreciate it, and I agree with it, wholeheartedly with that mission. Also, I just wanted to, you know, compliment you on your CTE list of the labs and the offerings, just opening up, you know, their world in terms of the opportunities. So I really like the list of the sample modules that you had.
Thank you.
Well, let me say thank you to both of you. I've been through a couple of these before, and I know they're extraordinarily time-consuming and a whole lot of work for a regular school, much less for the, given the nature of our schools. The professional development aspects are wonderful, and I think truly move teachers further down the road to where they want to be. But the ultimate beneficiaries are our students. And having those kinds of certifications is awesome. And so I thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you.
And we'll move on here to the, the next topic. Bridget Boblitz is going to talk about the current state, and maybe you should say the future state, of our juvenile court schools, and especially with what's going on with Los Prietos, Los Robles.
Yes, thank you. And good afternoon. And as Mr. Porter just indicated, I will be continuing to speak about our juvenile court schools specifically this afternoon, and presenting on the current, future state. A lot of current. Thinking, is that the bottom button? So the governor signed Senate Bill 823, known as the Realignment of the Division of Juvenile Justice, on September 30th of 2020. And this bill established the Office of Youth and Community Restoration, beginning July 1st of 2021. The Division of Juvenile Justice, or the DJJ, operated four facilities in the state, and those four facilities will be closing June 30th of 2023. And beginning with the July 1st of 2021, there was a change in the way that youth were processed through the justice system. So youth that had previously been sent to one of the DJJ's four facilities are now being placed in our county-operated local facilities. And here in Santa Barbara County, youth are placed in the, what we refer to as the Juvenile Justice Center, or the JJC, which is located in Santa Maria, and it houses our Dos Puertas School. And so just to reiterate with this bill, what it did is it, it makes that county facilities are now housing youth that have been adjudicated between the ages of 13 and 23, including youth who have committed serious or violent offenses, such as burglary, assault, homicide, and other serious crimes. So this Office of Youth and Community Restoration operates within the California Health and Human Services Agency, and the governor appointed former Judge Catherine Lucero as the director. The purpose of this Office of Youth and Community Restoration is to assess the efficacy of local programs, to provide technical assistance and support, to review local juvenile justice realignment plans, to fulfill statutory obligations of an ombuds person, and to develop policy recommendations. And if you haven't reviewed the Juvenile Justice Realignment Plan, it is located on their website, the Office of Youth and Community Restoration. It is also linked in this presentation. So if you click on that picture, it is linked there, and you can read more about that realignment So the Office of Youth and Community Restoration priorities, there are several. Really, they're to support the transition of justice-involved youth being served in local communities, to promote a youth continuum of services that are trauma-responsive and culturally informed, using public health approaches that support positive youth development, that build the capacity of community-based approaches, and reduce the justice involvement of youth. And through the promotion and use of evidence-based and promising practices, the OYCR, another acronym, will improve youth and public safety outcomes by reducing the transfer of youth into the adult criminal justice system, reducing racial and ethnic disparities, and increasing those community-based responses and interventions. And so there was an article that many of you or some of you may have seen, it was in Ed Source, and this is a quote from that article, from Catherine Lucero, the director of the Office of Youth and Community Restoration. And it was published in Ed Source on April 28th of 2022. And what she said is, "We're going to have kids in their communities, and we're going to transition them back welcomed, and healed, and forgiven, and that's how we're going to lead it." And so you can see that as we go through this presentation, keep that in mind as the work that is moving forward and the changes that are occurring in our current Juvenile Justice Center. And so I'd like to show you, based on this concept, the Santa Barbara County Juvenile Justice Realignment Plan, so going back to that plan, they grounded it in eight guiding principles, elevating care for youth in custody. And that was developed by the Annie E. Casey Foundation. And you can see those eight here. But I'd like to just share a short, three-minute video that discusses those. It does require that a standardized information explaining the rights be developed by July 1st throughout the entire state of 2023. It also requires that adjudicated youth have access to post-secondary academic It also requires that adjudicated youth have access to post-secondary academic and career technical education programs. And it added the prohibition of discrimination of adjudicated youth on the basis of gender, expression, or immigration status to the existing list of protected classes. And I wanted to just share a sampling. There are like 20, 25 of these exact rights, and I have maybe six here that I wanted to share with you. So one is to live in a safe, healthy, clean environment conducive to treatment, positive youth development, and healing, where they can be treated with dignity and respect. Another, to be free from physical, sexual, emotional abuse or corporal punishment. To receive adequate, healthy meals and snacks, clean water, this goes on, this is quite a lengthy list. To receive adequate, appropriate, timely medical, reproductive, dental, vision, mental health services provided by quality professionals. To maintain frequent and continuing contact with family members through phone calls, visits, mail, et cetera. And to receive a rigorous, quality education that prepares them for high school graduation, career entry, and post-secondary education. And again, to have that access to post-secondary academic and career educational courses and programs. And so I wanted just to share, there have, over the past several years, there have been several changes that have really impacted the current court school system and also the population of youth that we're serving. And so the first one was in 2018 that the booking criteria changed. And so with this change, there was a change in the number of youth who were being adjudicated for misdemeanor offenses. So they were, instead of being brought into the juvenile justice system, they were, I just lost my word, diverted, thank you, they were put into diversion programs. Secondly, the COVID-19 pandemic shutdowns. We saw a significant decline in the number of youth that we were serving in our court schools during this time, mostly because there were temporary shutdowns and closures also of the courts. And so youth were not being brought in or tried for any offenses. And that number has, while sometimes has creeped back up, it still is significantly reduced. Additionally, this change or bill being passed, Senate Bill 823, which is that realignment plan, and then lastly, now this AB 2741, that Youth Bill of Rights. And so some of the impacts of that on the Juvenile Justice Center facility as a whole is that it really, we have some distinct populations of youth that we're serving that are within the facility. And that first population is what is referred to as the SecureTrack, Secure Youth Treatment Facility. This was all in that realignment plan. These are the youth who are long-term committed youth, who are spread out in various units in the facility, who've committed those serious and violent offenses, and are also part of what's called a peak restoration program. And that program really focuses on providing individualized interventions that promote behavior change through data-informed programs. And so that is one sort of group of students we're serving. In the Juvenile Justice Center, if you tour on the 18th, we'll also visit what's considered the Trust Unit. The Trust Unit has a maximum of eight youth in the facility in this unit, and youth that are there complete an application and have to have a history of good behavior demonstrated in order to be accepted into the Trust Unit. Once it reaches its maximum, it's like basically closed for any new youth. But it does offer, you can see a picture of it here, more of a home-like setting environment. There are couches, a flat-screen TV, you can see there's a foosball table, gaming system, equipment, workout equipment, and the youth can freely move about that unit or that yard without asking permission from probation. So they're free to move around. In the other units, that is not the case. And they're also allowed to wear different clothing. So they have maybe blue jeans on and some different shirts in this unit. Then we have what's considered our general population. General population are youth who have been adjudicated but are not considered our SecureTrack, those long-term commitment. And then finally, there will be the treatment program. This is forthcoming. This will be the relocation of the camp, and it will be housed in Unit 3, which is meeting to be remodeled. And it will be remodeled based on those eight principles. So when you're looking at couches and light, they're looking at all of that as they're looking to remodel that unit. I wanted just to share that county probation conducted an analysis of local youth commitments to the, excuse me, Division of Juvenile Justice from July 17th through December 20th. And what they found is that the demographics of the youth that our county was sending to the DJJ, the gender, about 88% were male, about 47% were age 16 to 17, or 53% were over the age of 18, 71% were Hispanic, 24% were Black, 5% were Asian, and you can see the committing offenses listed there. So things such as robbery, murder, sex offenses, shootings. Additionally, these youth, 36 of them had a mental health diagnosis at the time of the commitment, 82% had a history of trauma. So we talk about those trauma-informed practices, when we're looking at 82% of the youth have that. 100% of them had a prior juvenile justice involvement, 82 had gang associations, 90% had committed offense resulting in harm to a victim, and 55% were already high school graduates or near graduation at the time of the committing offense. So from this data, what county probation has determined is that most likely, the new population or the current population of the SecureTrack youth will be comprised of mostly Hispanic males between the ages of 15 to 24, who have committed serious or violent offenses, including harm to victims. And it is anticipated that between two and five youth per year will be committed to our local Juvenile Justice Center going forward. Yes?
Thank you, Kami, sorry. Did you take this data a step further and maybe take a look at North County versus South County?
So this is data that the county probation office put together. I'm happy to inquire to see if they are able to disaggregate it in that way, but I personally don't have that data.
Okay.
But I'm happy to ask that. So when we think about, how is this impacting the Juvenile Justice Center on the whole, right? What kind of changes are these impacts having? We can look at that we're serving a reduced number of youth. So previously, prior to 2018, we were serving about 60 to 70 youth in the facility in total. Currently, we're about 20 to 35 youth on average that we're serving. And our population is changing. So we're seeing youth who have, again, experienced that significant trauma, and they're demonstrating exacerbated behavioral, mental, and academic needs. Previously, in terms of youth, we had a majority of the population that we were serving had only committed those misdemeanor offenses. But now, a majority of the population has committed a felony. And we are serving youth with longer-term commitments. So in 2017, the average length of a commitment was less than 18 days. And currently, this is from July 1st of 2021 through Monday. This average length of a commitment was about 53 days. Personally, I thought that was a little lower than I expected, but we do have those youth that come in and out still. But something to note is we have two youth right now who have a commitment of seven years. So you can see that real wide spans of time that we'll have youth in the facility. And additionally, because the population is changing, we have an increased number of youth in the facility who are high school graduates. So those are graduates that we have graduated or are coming, I think we may have graduated, I'm looking to Renee, but, or were really close to graduating. So that's about 40% of the population. Again, these numbers were taken on, I want, the numbers change daily, so I just want to make sure you know that. This was Friday, October 28th, there were 25 youth in the facility, so 40% of them, 10 were high school graduates on that day. It's also impacting Dos Puertas, right, our school. So when I say youth, I'm really talking about total population. Here, I'm going to talk about students. Those are our students still in high school. So again, Friday, the 28th, we had 15 students, because today I think we have 17. At that point, 20% were freshmen, 20 were sophomores, 40% were juniors, and 20% were seniors, and 33% of those students, so five of those youth out of 15, so a third, are SecureTrack youth. And so that is creating some changes in our instructional model. Previously, we had those 18 days, we're really a credit recovery in and out, youth were coming in and coming out. And now we're having to think about, how do we provide a more traditional high school model for some youth? And part of that process is that we want to get that WASC accreditation to be able to provide opportunities for their future, as well as really focusing on preparing them for college and career, so that emphasis on career tech ed and that we're focusing in on there. Additionally, we create individualized learning plans for each of our students when they enter our programs, and so we're adapting those. We have to think about short-term planning and long-term planning for some of our youth. As I said, some will be there a short time, so really a focus on credit recovery, let's get them as many credits as we can while we have them. And then some students may even begin high school and then graduate with us. So that's really different than the past. And so we're also looking at our staff professional learning, again, focusing in on that trauma-informed practices, looking at behavior management. We have seen an escalation of behavior needs in the facility, and really deepening the depth and breadth of curricula. And then at Los Roblos School or the camp, the major impact as a result of these changes is ultimately that the camp is closing, as we all know. As the camp is currently in this transitional period, we have reduced staffing levels at the camp. We have a total of six staff that go in and out of the camp, two of which are there full-time, the teacher and teaching assistant, and then our itinerant staff. And then probation is down to 12 staff there, 10 are regularly assigned, and then two are itinerant staff. On that 28th of October, we had three youth at the camp in total, two high schoolers and one graduate. And again, this will be a program that will be relocated to the Juvenile Justice Center as that treatment program housed in the remodeled Unit 3. And construction, just as an update, has not yet begun, and we do not know at this point when that will happen. So I want to just bring us back to this Office of Youth and Community Restoration and what their mission is. And so I'm going to read it. It says, "To promote trauma-responsive, culturally-informed services for youth involved in the juvenile justice system that support the youth's successful transition into adulthood and help them become responsible, thriving, and engaged members of their communities." And so this is our work, and this is the work we're dealing with now and the work ahead of us as we move forward into the future. So at that, I will stop and conclude and ask for any questions.
Bridgette, thank you, and I'm going to do the first question, if I may.
Certainly.
So probation is the big driver of this entire process, and the county is paying for it. We have our students, but high school graduates, I assume Alan Hancock would be their educational provider. I've kind of asked this question before, but what is the articulation or partnership between what we're doing with those students versus what Alan Hancock is? And I assume our students can also be taking Alan Hancock classes.
So that's a great question, and I will do my best to answer it. And if I misspeak, I have Renee Wheeler over here in the audience to help fill in some gaps. So you're correct in that probation is working with, I believe they are working with Alan Hancock at this point in time. On our last visit there, there were two youth that I saw that were taking classes with Alan Hancock online, and I do know that several other youth have been registered for classes that will be starting in the winter. So that is really, that post-secondary piece is really a probationary issue. So they are handling that, those post-secondary courses. In terms of our students right now, sort of that dual enrollment credit I think you were getting at, we have considered that option, we have looked into that option. We do not currently have students that are dual-enrolled between our school and Alan Hancock, but it is something that we continue to explore, especially as it relates to career tech ed and it's part of the CCI indicators. So it's something that Renee has been working very closely with our internal CTE team, so Noel Barthel, I believe she spoke to the board before, and Christine Petroni on, how do we make that happen for youth? Did that answer your question?
It does, thank you. And this is a process.
Yes.
Not a plan yet, but so I totally understand that. So for other board members, any questions? Ms. Dany?
I serve on the Hancock Foundation Board, so I'd like to address the formerly incarcerated students. There's a full organization on the campus, and one of our graduates, our very first high school graduation, is very influential in welcoming formerly incarcerated students onto the campus and helping them re-enter the academia. So Hancock is doing a great job.
And they have their Rising Scholars Program, which I know Fitzgerald is currently also linked up with.
Yes.
We just, there's a little blurb in this month's superintendent's report about that. I'm not sure if we're working with them at Dos Puertas, I'd have to ask Renee.
So many roles. Yeah, so the Rising Scholar Program, we did, they are coming in every other week to Fitzgerald, and we work with them. He has currently gone to the juvenile hall twice, the young man that you're talking about. He has submitted his paperwork so that he can go in more regularly to be live-scanned, but because he does have a felony record, it's taking a little bit longer. But one of our students that is going to graduate in March, he's already working with to get him an H number and identify courses. So the plan is he will start in January, taking a College Now course, and then he will already be enrolled and ready to go when he graduates with us, and he's anticipated to graduate in March. And so we do have a couple, I want to say three, maybe four students who, you sign their diplomas in August. They started a midterm, like abbreviated, class October 14th. And then one of the other things that Bill that we started, that Bridgette started her presentation on, is that probation works with the county education office to, and we provide them at network access, computer access, so that they can take those online courses. And so we do, we are currently working with them. And the one graduate student that we have at Los Roblos, he had already started a SBCC course because he lives there. And so we got him online, and he is now doing, finishing up those classes online while he's at Los Roblos. So it is something we've worked on, and we have had students concurrently enrolled in the past, we just don't right now. But we would like to bolster that up, because as you can see by the numbers, it's more and more of our students. it's more and more of our students.
Great. Thank you. And as we talk about all those moving pieces, I'll go back to what Ms. DeWort said. Trying to fund all this through ADA is unsustainable, absolutely. So Ms. DeWort, thank you for your efforts in that area.
Yes, thank you.
Other board members, questions? Yes, Ms. Irman.
I have my mic on. So thank you very much. That was very informative. And the impact on the Juvenile Justice Center, you mentioned that there's less youth overall than there was previous, but there are more serious offenses. Do you have any information as to why that is, there's that change? Or can you speak more to that?
So that was part of that change in the booking criteria. So in 2018, they changed the booking criteria. So as, well, that's one piece. The second piece is that they are no longer, as of July 1st of 2021, the county will no longer, has no longer sent youth to the Division of Juvenile Justice. And so youth that maybe we would have while they were awaiting trial to be adjudicated then would be shipped off to the DJJ are now staying with us. So it's kind of a twofold. So with that reduction and change in the booking criteria, we saw a reduction in youth just coming into the facility because misdemeanor offenses were going through diversion programs. And then with the realignment piece, now we are having youth with more serious offenses locally. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. And then I had one more question.
Sure.
Kind of, it's kind of not totally associated, but in terms of the resources for your staffing, can you speak to the emotional and mental health resources that you'll provide for staffing as well?
So for staffing, for our internal staff mental health, so we do have programs that were as part of our benefits package for mental health supports. Our staff have also all undergone what's called the Community Resiliency Model Training. So they're very well-versed in practicing trauma-informed care. They've had that training. I'm trying to think of other things that you may do with your staff. Oh, gosh. I told Renee, I said, "Just in case, I may need you as backup" because it's really her program. And so, so she knows the details.
So part of the community resiliency model is identifying those grounding techniques and noticing what issue elevated and triggered. And so it not only helps us help our students, but it helps us help ourselves. And so we do a lot of that. And then we do, like I said, we have that partnership with Behavior Wellness. They're onsite. And then at our community school, we have an SBT group data. And they are part of our staff meetings. And part of the staff meetings is just talking it out and talking about what affects us. And they're giving us those kind of in-the-moment, like, "Well, have you tried this?" To help us know that we're not alone, right? And it affects us all differently. But I think more to your point is there's no way to work with these youth and not have it impact us in some way.
Maybe you should just stay there just in case I need you again.
Thank you. Ms. Dainey?
I remembered. Okay. You have three at Los Prantos.
Correct.
It's closing.
Correct.
The new facility hasn't even started.
Correct.
So where will those three reside in the interim?
So two of them, I believe, are, are they being released? I'm getting the confusion of the two that are March graduates.
So what probation is planning right now is that they will keep Los Prantos open until the new facility is ready for them. So that's why they never gave a hard and fast, like, close date. They at first said on or around July 1st of 2023. They have since said there's no way that's going to happen. And they haven't given a date yet.
And typically, the youth that are at the camp too are also serving a shorter-term commitment. So it's like 180 days or something. So, you know, at some point, they'll probably be released out before even the transition takes place.
So when that happens, would there be any coming into Los Prantos?
We're not sure. I mean, honestly, we're not sure. I think they have still been sending one or two here or there, but it isn't significant. I mean, on average, what have you had, like, four youth at max this year?
Since July 1?
Uh huh. No, I mean, like, at one time.
Since July 1? I want to say, yeah, it's probably six. Last year, the highest we had was nine students. And I want to say so far this year, it's been between four and six. But the judge sentences students to the program at Los Prantos. So as long as the judge is still sending them there, it will stay open.
Thank you.
Great question.
Ms. DeWort?
Thank you. Regarding staffing, is there a staffing issue, a shortage? And do the students have a choice to be in person or learning online?
So the classes are in person. There is a staffing issue. I mean, probation is having significant staffing issues. We are fully staffed at the moment in terms of our staff, but we do experience difficulties with teen subs and that sort of thing. But probation is, they are significantly understaffed.
Other questions? Ms. Cardy?
Yes, thank you. I'm probably stating the obvious, but I'm so thrilled about the Juvenile Justice Realignment Plan. But in reading, in reading the eight guiding principles, it really feels as if we need to revisit all eight of these across the board. Because if these principles were put into practice daily and we were reading values that promote equity and well-being and making sure that family members are brought in as partners and our community connections were strengthened and we continually improved, we had that continuous improvement process put into place, we would probably be seeing fewer students in JCCS anyway. So it's, I think these are really well-written and such a sound framework. That's great news for Catherine Mussero. And also, I wanted to mention that what you were talking about, Renee, and the mental health trauma-informed practices that are being offered at county ed, you know, those are also put into practice at even Storyteller because the staff at Storyteller is using something called reflective practice because they too are encountering many of the same things that trigger. And as a staff, as teachers in general, that trauma-informed practice can really help change the nature of communication and response. It's such a, it's one of the wonderful things that have come out of ACES. And our focus on ACES in this county has been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I want to thank the two of you. And please pass along our thanks to the entire staff for the incredibly important work that they do. And speaking for the board, I hope that as we watch this new process unfold, we as a board think of ways collectively and individually to support that. Maybe we need to think about doing things in different ways as well as, especially those of us in North County, how can we be personally involved to support what you do? So please be thinking about that. More to follow.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And I, just one last thing. I do hope that many of you are able to join the tour coming up in a couple of weeks to really come and see the facility if you're able. Thank you.
And that is on March 18th. And if you have not RSVP'd.
November.
I'm sorry.
November 18th.
November 18th. What month are we in?
March is a few more months down the road.
Yeah. This month on the 18th. So thank you very much. At this point, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would ask for a first and a second, and then we'll discuss if we need to.
Second?
We have a first and a second. And any comments, questions about the items on the consent agenda? Then we will move forward to a vote. And this does not require a roll call. So all in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The motion passes and we move on to action items. Agenda item number 15. And unless counsel objects, I'm going to ask for two motions and then two votes. We have a set of new board policies that the policy committee has taken a look at. And then we have one that we're circling back on that I would like to take a separate vote on. So Austin, is that going to be okay with you? Okay. So I would ask first of all for a motion and a second to approve the new board policies. And I'll give a, let me give a little preamble first. The committee met on these new policies. There's more than it looks like because there's some sort of the same policies for the certificated and the classified and the management employees. We examined all of these in committee and it was unanimous that we made a recommendation to the board to approve these new policies. So having said that, I'll ask for a first and a second. And then we can have additional discussion if we need. We have a first and a second. Okay, any questions or comments about these new board policies as shown on page four of the agenda? All right, hearing none, then I will call for a vote. All in favor of the board policies in the 400 series as shown on the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? And that's the 4,000 series, not the 400 series. And yes, I'm a mathematician. So the motion passes. So we'll move on, circling back to board policy. 5117 decimal one inter-district attendance appeals. We've been through this several times at the committee level. And the committee did vote with the majority voting to approve BP 5117 decimal one as written originally. Ms. DeWort had a list of things that she asked that we would incorporate. But again, it's the recommendation of the committee that we do not accept any of those recommendations. And we approve the board policy as drafted. So I would ask for a first and a second. And then we can have further discussion as needed.
So moved? A second?
Ms. Dainey, I'll give you, I'll give you a second. And Ms. Cardy, I'll give you the first on that one. So we have a first and a second. And now I'll open it up to comments and questions or anything else. Ms. DeWort?
Thank you. And thank you to the committee for listening to my recommendations. I just wanted to bring the board's attention to one paragraph in our board policy on page three, and it's the second paragraph. And it's regarding the county board grants deference to the decision of the governing board in existing district policies where the decision is being appealed. And it goes on. The objection I have to this language is that the county board grants deference. And I believe that that's a biased paragraph that weighs heavily in favor of the districts. And I understand the districts, you know, issue and the haywire that would happen if we granted appeals to all that came before us. But I believe that in fairness and in equity, that we should be granting or denying the appeal based on its merits, not based on, not in deference to the governing board. So I would just like to request that we remove that paragraph. And because our criteria actually covers that in items, let's see, D and E, it's, the districts are protected by the criteria. So I think just in fairness of the appeal, the appeal process is that we should be making our decisions based on the merit of each case and not in deference to the districts. I think that just ties our hands. So I would appreciate modifying if the board is willing and would, just removing that one paragraph because I think we're covered by the criteria in D and E. Or we can add a sentence saying "The county shall grant or deny appeals based on its merits." Thank you.
Okay, before I ask for a motion to do that, any general discussion about the notion?
Mr. Payne is, does the difference between hearing certain issues as we do de novo and what this is suggesting deference, we need extraordinary circumstances to overcome, is that fundamental to the reason why we have the deference provision?
I think it is in a lot of ways. It's pretty common in appeals for deference to be given to an administrative agency, whether it's a school district or administrative law. And this kind of models that type of process where deference is given to the agency that has the expertise to fulfill whatever responsibility has been delegated in statute or otherwise. So I see it as kind of modeling that kind of process. I haven't looked at that issue specifically, but I think it's pretty common in these types of policies. So I don't know. I think it's important, as you suggested, for a de novo type of appeal for that to be in there. But like I said, I haven't looked at it specifically before now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howell. Any further discussion? And Ms. Cardy?
I'm just reading that passage, and it just provides a context for the decision. It says, "The county board grants deference to the decision of governing board in existing district policies where the decision being appealed was made by the governing board and was adequately explained to the parent or guardian and will not override a lawful district policy absent a showing of substantial harm to the student." So if, I think, I think that question answers itself. We would grant deference if those conditions were in order. And the converse of that would be if those conditions were not, then we would be obviously overriding a district decision if there was a showing of substantial harm to the student. So I just see it as an unnecessary change. I don't see it as something that would be overtly or significantly changing the function of this body, in my opinion.
Any other comments? Ms. DeWort?
Well, I, I believe that that language is, shows bias. And I think the reason why a student or a family is coming to appeal should reflect that we are, we are an open-minded board. We will make our decision based on the merits. And I don't think ed code says anywhere that we will, that the county board grants deference. Where deference is where I'm kind of hung up on. And I think just for the whole appeal process, we have that, we have, there's other language in here that was, that talks about the districts, that the district's policy was adhered to and consistently applied. So I think there is, there are protections for the district in our policy. But I just believe that it just appears that it's weighted heavily. And I guess that's, and it doesn't seem like a fair due process approach. I believe that each student or family has, is, should be granted due process. And I think when we talk about deference, why are, why are they appealing to us? So I think that just the merits should be how we make our decision. And we have a lot of, we have a lot of guidance on how to make our decision. But I think that just the deference phrase in there, it doesn't, it's not in ed code anywhere. And I've looked at a lot of county board ID, inter-district transit handbooks. And a lot of them have been updated since 2019. And I could not find this language. And most of them have language regarding the merits. Thank you.
So if I may, the phrasing to me means that, golly gee, we respect our school districts inside of the county. And we do. They do wonderful and great things. By leaving defer in there, I don't believe our board is particularly timid by any means. And the discussions, we've already seen a couple of the- And the discussions, we, we've already seen a couple of these, and I think there was very vibrant discussion about whether we were going to agree or not with the, the local district. And I didn't see anybody throwing up the deferral aspect as being something we should be afraid of. So I, Mr. DeWort, I certainly hear you, and I could not disagree with you. But I think given the, the, from my individual perspective, the overarching way that the board policy is written gives us great discretion into what we might decide. And so with, with that, Mr. DeWort, would you like to make a, a motion to amend the current motion that's on the floor?
Withdraw the motion? There's a motion already on the floor.
This would amend that motion for this.
Oh.
So, so we'll, we'll work on this little piece first, and then we'll work our, our way back up to the main motion.
Okay. I'd like to amend the motion to strike the language on page three, second paragraph, "The county board grants deference to the decision of the governing board and existing district policies," and so forth.
Thank you. We have a motion, and do we have a second?
We've got a lot of versions of this. Can I get a page number in the board book? I just want to be sure I'm tracking what?
BP 5117.1, page two.
Oh, thank you.
Of today's board book. We've had lots, lots of board books.
148.
And Mr. Howell will pause until you.
No, go ahead. I'll.
Until you scroll down to page 148. Okay. We do have a motion for an amendment on the table. I would ask for a second. And if we don't have a second, the motion dies, and we move back to the original motion to approve the board policy as drafted. Any further discussion or further amendments desired? Okay. I will call for a vote, and this does not require a roll call. So all in favor of approving board policy 5117 decimal one as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
No. Okay. Please make sure we record that. And, and my comment would be, there was a lot of discussion about what we do with military kids, and we talked about granting them the absolute ability to move to their district of choice. And there's reasons not to do that, and the attorney kind of fired a shot across our bow if we dared do that. But, so I, I would say, I, I think, given the, the thoughtfulness of our board, if that ever actually comes up, it would be through the regular appeal process, and we listen to that very carefully, given the special circumstances that our military kids have here in this county. All right. Thank you for that, for that very thoughtful discussion. Let's move on to action item number 16, reimbursing expenses for board members to attend the CSBA Annual Education Conference coming up in December. So this is a new board policy which allows us, fairly new policy, that allows us to reimburse members of this board who decide to go. It's sort of a blanket policy. We, we don't approve it by name, at least the way the policy is written right now. This is clearly a professional development opportunity for board members to attend. So I would ask for a, a, a motion to approve in a second, and then we'll have any discussion if needed.
A motion to approve?
We have a motion.
A second?
First and a second. Okay. Any, any discussion? And we're, we're happy to answer any questions about what this is all about and why it would be professional development and why we should raise the SB CEO budget to do this. Okay. No, no further discussion. I would ask all of those in favor of reimbursing these expenses, to anyone who desires to go from the board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? The note, motion passes unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
Just a question. How many do we know are going to be attending in San Diego?
I believe according to the superintendent, we, we have two people who desire to go, but it may be that not both of them asked for reimbursement. So I think that's reasonable to fund. Did I say that right? Dr. Salsito, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And then we move on to action item number 17, adopting a resolution recognizing the, yet another state of emergency for the next month, authorizing teleconference meetings. We've been doing this before. As a reminder, in February, at the end of February, the ability to do this expires. So I would ask for a motion to approve this for another month and a second, and then we can have discussion.
A motion.
We have a first and a second. And any discussion or comments?
I'll just say, I, I think it, all of us hope we don't need this, but it seems to me it's, it's really prudent to have it, because if something comes up and we need it, this is our only time to authorize it. So I, I'm all in favor.
And, and this is a what-if kind of thing. It's not, it doesn't allow things to automatically go straight to, to teleconferencing.
And it allows committees to resume, which is probably, if the committee has urgency in meetings, this is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All, yes. Yes, deserving.
I just do have a question clarification. So we have to vote on this every month in order for it to stay current? Okay.
Fairly awkward, but.
I was wondering, because I saw it last month, and so that, that helped.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of approval of this resolution? Please, I'm sorry, this is a roll call. So Anna?
Okay, Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. DeWort?
Aye.
Mrs. Erman?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost is absent. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. We move on to information items, and the first couple are going to be what's been going on with the, the bargaining, collective bargaining organizations that SB CEO deals with. The board has no direct authority over salaries and how they're structured, but the board meeting is a way for SB CEO to make transparent to the public what it is that they're doing and the, the kinds of things that are going on to support our teachers. Where we do have authority is the overall budget process in terms of the big numbers. So this is not going to require approval. This is just the SB CEO staff, the superintendent, telling us how they plan on doing this. So I would ask for our Director of HR, Mari, please to come and tell us how things are going with our, our bargaining organizations.
Good afternoon. They're going fabulous. So we basically, for the last nine years, we've had no change to the local control funding formula. So it's been a really long time since we've had any increases. We've been what's called flat funded, as you know from presentations from Mr. Ridgeway. And this year, for the first time, we are going to have an increase. So it's very exciting for us. We've been meeting with our unions, our two representative unions, SBCEA and CSEA. So what you have in your board book are two draft MOUs. And essentially what we did was we took the exact language that referred to the three-year cycle, the three-year term, and the salary increases, and simply changed those percentages according to all the analysis and discussion that we had looked at for sustainability. So it's going great. We're very excited. It's a tough time for staff right now with everything that's going on, so I think it will be very well received. Any questions?
Would it be fair to say that staff across the board will be receiving raises according to step in column with these, these new agreements?
Step in column comes at, at certain times of the year, so, but yes, they will receive raises on the salary schedule.
Right. On the schedules, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you. Certainly well deserved. There have been very paltry raises among staff for the last few years. Prices are not going down in Santa Barbara County.
Right.
So it's, I think this will be very helpful, and certainly I wish we could do more. But thank you. So the, one thing we do have control over is the salary paid to our superintendent. And recently, the Board Salary Committee recently met and with Chair of Mary Beth Cardy. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Cardy to illuminate us on what's going on.
I'll illuminate you, I will. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Yes, the Board Salary Committee just reconvened. We met several weeks ago, two weeks ago. And that Board Salary Committee consists of Maggie Dany and her lady voyage, who's proceeding, replacing Peter McDougall, Chris Porter, and myself, along with leadership from both financial and HR. And the purpose was to better understand what the increased LCCF funding means after nine years of flat funding. And it, and it really is good news across the board. And as you heard from Mari, building on a solid foundation of successful negotiations with bargaining units that resulted in three-year contracts and a series of those, which can only be credited to the deep trust and open communication that has been the hallmark of this county ed leadership team. So now reopening negotiations is going well. This supports us as a committee, the opportunity to revisit the salary of our county superintendent, which has remained largely unchanged since '18. You can see the schedule, that was an addendum to our board packet. And it also allows us to correct, Dr. Salsito's status as the lowest-paid county office of education superintendent in all class three offices. She has proudly held that title, has never, ever asked for reconsideration. But because LCCF has given us this opportunity, we're in the position now to be able to right-size her salary. So we took a close look at the salary survey that was commissioned by our HR and finance department, and we basically arrived at kind of a midpoint, I would describe it as. And we had some recommendations in going forward that looked at a combination of an average or a middle point between the lowest serving superintendent and the highest superintendent. And these are class threes. These are like-sized county ed offices, and they are also California, Placer, Sonoma, Monterey, Ventura. And we kind of came up at a midpoint. And I think we're going to move forward with that recommendation. And that number is approximately 270,000. And we are going to move to a vote in December, so this is all for information purposes. I just wanted to underscore the fact that this has been a long time coming, that the budget will withstand. We've done a deep study, and Bill gave it the nod, Nicole. And I think it's the right thing to do. And that is what our committee came up with. We would like to move that forward next month to a vote.
So right now, this is an information item, and there's not been a lot, a lot of time to look at the algorithm that maybe we might have for the process. But I would invite any questions or comments right now, knowing that this will be the debate that we're sending. Okay. Well, Mr. Howell?
I appreciate the work that went into this. And I think many of us have been in other organizations for profit where there's a compensation committee, and there's a peer group study, and there are a lot of compensation consultants. But trying to think of a great definition I heard of a consultant is someone who for a high price will take the watch off your wrist and tell you what time it is. Because mostly you know the information, the compensation consultant kind of repackages it. But it, it's really about the peer group, and I think we've done a really good job. It's not only other county ed offices. I think if we didn't have the information, we would wonder, what about Santa Maria? What about Santa Barbara? So the information is here, and I think it's, it's laudable. It's really necessary that we look at it and we pay the superintendent an appropriate salary. So it's us, up to us in the committee to recommend an appropriate salary. So I'm all in favor of the process. I'll also say it's almost surreal to be sitting here with, you think of, in the private sector, it's so different than being sitting here with Susan smiling and all of us here, and we're talking about Susan's salary. It's odd, but that's, that's the way the world works. So I applaud the effort of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Okay. We'll move on then to information number one. We have received the most recent Williams Valenzuela legislation school district report. Thank you for that. Item number 22, as referred to earlier, the COVID-19 state of emergency will be ending on the last day of February. The personnel report is also included in the board packet. And any questions on that can always be forwarded to the Secretary of the Board, the superintendent. Mari has great answers all the time, so we appreciate that. And finally, a reminder to everybody that the December meeting, our next meeting is going to be the board reorganization meeting. And Ms. Dany chairs the committee that puts together recommendations on which committees each one of us is going to sit on. So the next few days is the opportunity for all of us to contact her, let us know, I, I went off of that one. I want to get on that one. I want to be this. I want to be that. And Ms. Dany will, with her committee, will put it all together and help us out. And of course, if you're also able to let Ms. Frost know that, or the superintendent, everybody will pass it to Ms. Dany. Ms. Dany, remind me who's on your committee? I kind of forget. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. And with that, I will ask if there are any items that anybody would like to place on a future agenda? None heard, but you can always request that of the chair. And finally, in under two hours, and I will tell Ms. Frost most definitely we were able to do this within two hours, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? None heard? We are adjourned. I want to thank everybody, everybody for coming, especially members of the staff, where time is your most important resource. Thank you for spending your time with us. It's always great seeing y'all and, and learning from you. So thank you.